Fellas, uh, councilor, may I have an order published tonight? Will you attend? I'll go follow it.
Mayor Lamont, Councilmember Siewell.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton, here. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City manager, Bill.
Here.
City attorney, Mitch.
Here.
Okay, we have a communication for citizens. Have one that's signed in. You live in the city of East Ridge, you're old there, you have five minutes. Leslie Boston, give your name, address.
For your goodness, for strength and health, and for everything tonight, and for all the blessings of life. We thank you tonight for our city. We thank you for our leaders tonight, and we understand what your word says, that the powers that be are born in the womb, so therefore, Lord, we ask for your direction and your wisdom to every leader tonight, to this congregation of folks that are here. We pray, Lord, that your will be accomplished. Give us wisdom, we pray. We ask, Lord, your blessings upon our city. Bless the sacred and the shoddy, and those who are suffering tonight. I pray that ended comfort and strength to people on their life. We thank you for all the blessings tonight, that you give us, in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the Senate gentlemen? Do I have a question?
Question.
Say.
Yeah, we're going to talk. Okay, it's a question. Jack, can you give me one more? That's right. Okay. Don't call me.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Siewell.
Yes.
Okay, we have communications for citizens. Have one that's signed in. You live in the city of East Ridge, you're old there, you have five minutes. Leslie Boston, give your name, address.
Do you think Leslie, Leslie Boston? Is that better?
Yeah.
Great. Seven thirty-one, Germantown Circle. It is my desire this evening that no one makes a motion to take the Sweet Bay issue off of the table. We had a very productive meeting last night. I want to thank Mr. Smith for coming to town and meeting with citizens. He represents Lexington Assets. Among other things, we discussed the situations at the Sweet Bay Apartments, and we also discussed the crime-free lease addendum that his properties implement in the apartments that they manage at Tierney's Ridge. It was a civil agreement between the landlord and the tenant. He even made himself available to walk the property with homeowners, specifically the Newcastle Apartments. I think we were successful in bringing an absentee landlord to town to discuss apartments, which has been, I think, a frustration for our codes department. I want to thank a citizen, Laura Mathis, for researching and gathering information on these addendums that spurred the interest, gave us time to research, and present this to you all. Mr. Miller, I want to express appreciation for you to begin the process in drafting and citywide ordinance to require crime-free addendums in all rental properties in East Ridge. Mr. Litchford, we are relying on your legal expertise to take this as far as you can with the law, to raise the standards of the management style in East Ridge, the property conditions, so they're conducive to crime-free environments, and we hope to, most importantly, raise the standard of tenant behavior in East Ridge. We are at almost fifty percent balance between homeowners and rental properties. We hope that this will suppress crime in a proactive manner to alleviate the reactive position our police department is in. I'd like to encourage council, I'd like to encourage council to take an active role in researching and providing input on the ordinance as it progresses. You all will ultimately be the ones to vote on this ordinance. I'd like to take a minute to thank Mr. Sewell for standing up and expressing concern for the children that may live there, to catch the bus, the safety of the kids, and the condition of the building that exists. I'd like to thank Mr. Cagle for creating an opportunity for Q and A with representatives from Lexington Assets. Mr. Lambert's not here this evening. Two weeks ago, he said to me in council meeting, we're trying to get away from the Q and A. I hope he and all of you recoil from that position. We have a right to ask questions in this public forum. We vote you in. We fund your seats. This is still a government for the people, by the people. So I hope our next leadership embraces Q and A with the citizens, with the citizens and among all of you during council meetings. I look forward to watching the progress of this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to come up? If you don't want to sign, who wants to sign? Okay, we'll move on to, uh...
I'm here.
Okay, come on, it's all right.
I'm not a citizen, but you asked a question.
Where?
I will call you up when I... Just hold on one second. When we get to this item, I do want to give a little update on that. You'll be able to...
Okay, communications for council members. Jack?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Miller for sending a reporter to rent a caravan. Best money that we could ever spend about here. September to June, we spent less than $7,000. People used it, so it's been a worthwhile venture to join into. And I noticed that the city chairman, they lost their grant for the bus service coming out here.
So we?
So we quit, so, okay, so I'd like to leave, you know, just as a note saying that I'd like for us to keep the caravan.
Oh, yes, that's still funded, yes, we're still, we're still in that program, we continue to do so.
And one thing, I hate, I want to say that we had to see you leave here in a couple weeks. George served with me, I know I voted against you. But we're grounded to work together. You got up shot, it's great, it was nice to forgive you, so, good behavior.
Still?
I have to say, I'm going to miss you so much. Thank you, thank you guys.
Same, you'll be missed. It's been a pleasure working with you since, since election. We'd also like to thank you for preliminary investigative work that you've done, that I emailed you shortly after the July 12 meeting where we had the outdated equipment and the information that was brought forward concerning our police department. As you can see, on the agenda, we've got several resolutions that are coming forward, but appreciate the preliminary and ongoing investigation about that, along with recalls and actions that are being put in place and creating policies and procedures to prevent anything offensive, and, yeah, appreciate that.
Yes, it's good. Scott will miss you, but I know you're the mayor, so you can still bear with it. Why, I thought you've done a tremendous job in East Ridge. I'd say I've had, I guess, five or six coming years. You've about done all of them. Some of them were good, but you know, you can, no one had done kind of what we're doing in the border region, it was called different, different thing then, but do appreciate everything you've done, make it seem good, but I know you're going to enjoy your retirement. That's all I can say. It's true, though.
I have nothing. Been pretty good if I'm banking on until October twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
I still will be a resident of the community, but I'm not going to leave in the area run away.
Okay, we've got old business, uh, before we start, I want to add something to the agenda. It'd be each on the new business, the discussion of hiring a city manager. Would Scott leave, retire? What's your thoughts on it? I know it's good, we'll start. Last, let's go to old business, ordinance number ten seventy-six.
And I would like the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations, the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at three six two three Fountain Avenue, tax map number one five six M H zero zero two, R one residential district, R three residential apartment district.
I would like to briefly give a report on what occurred last night. Sorry, phone ringing off the hook and people come in all day. I didn't get this done until, I think, about five oh five, so I do have a copy for you and others that read that meeting, as well as Mr. Russell Smith, who is the director of operations for Lexington Asset Management. I would like him to come forward. Yes, please, sir. We, if you just stand by that, I'm going to give a little briefing on what the meeting because a lot of these people were there and some were not. Overall, I thought the meeting was, we had a productive dialogue, including questions and answers from the residents and Mr. Smith, this was concerning the citizens' concerns pertaining to the rezoning application, operation of Sweet Bay, the overall construction plans, et cetera. After back and forth discussions and Q and A, appeared to be a consensus, a multilist consensus, that they would accept the rezoning subject to specific stipulations being met by Lexington Asset Management, and that the stipulations would be attached as part of the rezoning approval. Stipulations included landscaping, a mirror at the front driveway, bus stop pads and shelter, implemented crime-free housing addendum to the lease agreements, provide perimeter fencing around the complex, install a gate at the front driveway entrance, provide onsite security on the premises, install adequate lighting around the complex to eliminate dark areas, install video surveillance into strategic locations, and also would be included a stipulation that said at such time as all these stipulations are met and in place by the owner, that the city will not issue certificates of occupancy. So all these stipulations need to be met prior to the seat of those being issued. Lastly, it's my conclusion that the citizens were adamant that the city council do not take this rezoning application for Sweet Bay off the table and vote on this rezoning until such time as the owner contractor, which is a gazelle of construction, demolishes the building on the east side of the complex and has seat in the area. I believe I've covered those areas, and Mr. Smith is here, and I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'll let you, here's a copy for you, I'll let you address what your feelings are and what you're committed to the project and these stipulations would be. This is the body, this is the body up here that's going to take it off the table, not tonight, but possibly at the time that the demolition is completed and the area is sealed.
Sure. So just to be clear, it's not my desire to take it off the table tonight either. I think after our meeting last night, that would be counterproductive, so...
Thank you.
I've given this a good bit of thought since we've met last night, and, you know, clearly, I think we've, we've come up with this list of bullets that the community would like to see of the property for us to move forward. Some of them are easy to say yes to immediately, some of them, I think, require a little bit further study, and I think we addressed those last night. So I think my desire would be to take the next two weeks to kind of flush that out and then come back to the meeting on the twenty-third with some more details, you know, for instance, the desire for a bus stop, how feasible is that? You know, that's, we're not the only people who'll be involved in making that happen. What type of fencing, where the location of the fencing would be? So that, that would be our goal. The demo of the east building starts at the beginning of next week, it's already fenced, and the heavy equipment's there. So I think in two weeks, I can have better details here, and hopefully half of the building will be on the ground, which I think would ease a lot of people's minds. So that's kind of where I am on this. Are there any other details that I can provide?
If I may, Mr. Boston, may I ask you to come forward? I'm going to ask anybody else who wants to, I know this is, you were to meeting last night, I had more conversation with you.
I'm not the leader of the pack, I'm not a bulldog, I'm not a troublemaker, I've been called all of those, but just a conservative citizen.
I didn't say you were. It wasn't like, it wasn't like communications.
I've been called that, and I just want to make that right, but I'm, I'm just a conservative citizen.
No, you've been called your life.
I'm just a smart kid.
Let me basically, I'm calling her forward because I've had more communication with Mr. Boston than anyone else on this subject, so, and anybody else I see similar fa, familiar faces in the audience over last night's meeting, you may want to come forward and basically give your take on, on the meeting, if you had anything to add.
Well, I think it was a very productive meeting, and I really appreciate you making yourself available to the citizens and taking questions and answering them. I, again, appreciate you and Mr. Castor showing up and facilitating the meeting. I know it caught into your personal time.
That's okay.
Well, but we appreciate, we appreciate you...
We, we walked away, I think, with something that we can move forward.
Well, as I stated earlier, I, I believe that the full demo of the building is primary, and I think we've all agreed that that should come down before this is considered.
Correct. And he's agreed to that?
Right.
It will be down before the meeting, four weeks from today.
Four weeks from today? Okay.
If I have to vote myself. I think, I think we'll see some progress before the meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Need anything else?
No, that's it, that's it. Any questions? Just very... I know most of the council meetings are right now, it's called the city manager communications, but does anybody else that want to come forward that was there last night to have anything to do on set? Okay. Thank you. We're, we're set, so the conclusion on this, that it will stay on the table.
Okay, and someone would like to motion to, uh...
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at a resolution eight, number twenty-eight forty-five.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the expenditure funds from the city's fund balance for construction of a field house at the East Ridge High School football stadium.
What was the summary?
So do I have a motion to remove this from the table? Discussion? Discussion, okay. This off the table for discussion. It's set.
I'll say it.
Okay, let's start discussion.
I'm going to check a little on that. Take the, the other motion, remove the front table.
Go, go, Jim.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Siewell.
Yes.
There we have it.
Okay, how are we going to get this built? There's been conflicting discussions about price.
Okay. Number one, let's talk about how to be funded. In my discussions with the assistant general counsel, comptroller, treasury officer, general counsel, I was told that we cannot incur a loan with a nonprofit under Tennessee Code Tennessee statutes. It does not provide the city the authority to do so. On the other hand, it doesn't say we can't, but he says we trump you because you're a citizen under the state. Unfortunately, it's, that was one way that we could have done it. You can do it in Florida, you can do it in Georgia, but you can't do it in Tennessee, but so be it. So the second way of looking at funding was to provide dollars to alumni association, they have a hundred twenty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand to have, from fundraisers, twenty-five thousand from the county, and the balance they were requesting was about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The city would give them those dollars to let them build it. I received a email on the date of June twelve, two thousand eighteen, from Alicia Hodge, who is the lead attorney for NTS and the city, and the Tennessee municipal lady. She basically referred back to the letter and the conversation I had with the assistant general counsel, and basically said, you shouldn't proceed going that way. Number one, it's a public, it's being a project that's built on public property. Would the city ever take over ownership of that building? It's hard to say you can't. And if there ever was, then the city owns the building. We can't build a building and own a building that's built by a nonprofit. And it's invading the purchasing guidelines of the state of Tennessee, as well as every other state that I'm aware of, as well as our own. Public improvement projects have to be hired an architect, has to be bid specifications and drawings done, sealed, competitively advertised, competitively bid, and the bid has to go to the lowest responsive bidder that is qualified to do the work in the state of Tennessee. That's what the law says. So that's the only avenue available to do this project. We can take money from the alumni association, there's seventy-five thousand. We can take money from the county to apply for this project. The balance for that money is going to have to come from some revenue stream or from some other area of the budget. Talking with several architects, we're talking about a field house that will have HVAC plumbing because you're talking about restrooms and showers and electric. Just a basic warehouse, metal warehouse going up, it costs seventy-five, a hundred dollars a square foot. We're talking about adding these other amenities, even the basics, steel, metal building with HVAC plumbing and electrical to this degree. They said count on a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy-five dollars a square foot. So therefore, three thousand square foot building is going to cost you four hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus an architectural fee of ten percent would be added, four hundred forty-five thousand. You build a four thousand square foot building, it costs six hundred thousand dollars, architects' fee, ten percent, sixty thousand. Five thousand square foot building, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus seventy-five thousand for architecture fee, ten percent. Question is, if we're looking at a three thousand square foot building, that's six hundred sixty thousand dollars, you're going to be three hundred thousand dollars short with our monies, as well as monies that we receive from the county and from the alumni We have a budget that has been approved by the city. These expenses, proposed expenses for this project are not included. Therefore, the only way that you can get involved with some project like this is you incur a capital note, take it over ten years, turn around and take the money out of the fund balance. We have about a million dollars in that fund balance. You've got to remember what that fund balance is for. They're now coming through the council tonight, probably about ten or fifteen minutes, and asking for a hundred and forty thousand dollars of it for police equipment and vehicles, and that's needed now. We also have an animal control facility that we've been looking at. We're working, our animal talk is working with the state, ascertain whether or not the construction of an animal control facility is eligible expense under the border region. If it is not, then we're looking at for five hundred thousand dollars for that, where's that money going to come from? So you've got some decisions to make, Chris. I'll lay it all out, and entertain any questions you have.
So, I know that they've been, they've put together a diagram and a layout, and they really want to get started with it, and I understand the need and the desire, but understanding that the current plan has some ADA issues and other out of compliance issues, and then we don't have an accurate idea of the size or the actual law, we're guest debating at the...
You know, I've, I've had some conversations with Tim James, and he's in the audience, thank you for coming, Tim. We think that it's probably best that we sit down and really hammer this thing out as far as what is needed, square footage and so forth, and then, you know, come back to the council. Right now, we're just grasping certain areas, grasping certain...
And this started with a good plan, and I mean, you can take from this, and...
I think we can, we have an ar, they have an architect, and we can work with that same architect, because he's already done some work on it.
But to me, it's just, you know, it's not a place where I think that I can vote for an open amount, not having specific ideas and plans of what this will end up being.
I was told years and years ago that councils or city managers should not incur, go down the path of, of occurring debt of any sort unless you have a specific monetary appropriation or allocation or bond proposed for that project. Maybe you can't bid something out if you don't have the money to pay for it. You can't do that.
Is it possible, last, Mr. James, that they should give us a quote? And then bring it back to us, in one of the calls?
Sure. I mean, I would, I would like to sit down with Mr. James and, and let's hammer out what, what we're looking at here.
Now, I'm just liking, I'm liking Mr. Poehl here mark the fifty thousand.
Restaurant.
Restaurant.
Correct.
So, and then they've got seventy-five thousand, that's a hundred twenty-five. They need a concession stand, and they need a restaurant up there, so I was wondering if we might just go ahead and, to see if the building, the restaurants, and the concession stand, and if it takes another hundred thousand a week, go there to a hundred twenty-five, but I would be, I'd be willing to match what they've got, is a hundred twenty-five thousand, build restrooms, because the public have been using them during football games, and recreate the concession stand, give a lot of big bucks, get even sitting up there, and then they can build that place where they come back, if they get to get any more money, then they come back and attach it right to the back end.
That's feasible?
That would be my idea, on kind of getting the restrooms up there, put on, and concession stand, come back.
Most of the plans are for, they have the concession stand built into that, it wasn't moved?
Yes. So are you looking at fifty thousand has to go for the restrooms? I know that for sure, because that's, the earmark was done by the county commissioners, and we should touch the seventy-five thousand from the alumni... And we should touch the seventy-five thousand from the alumni association because that's pretty much for the thing from the field house. So are you saying that we take the fifty thousand to build the restrooms and then see what in the extra dollars for the concession?
Well, I will take the seventy-five too, and then just match the hundred twenty-five. See if we can get built for the hundred twenty-five, for two fifty.
I think we're not, well, I hear what you're saying. Talking with architects, and I've talked to an awful lot of special room reviewing, you know, going out and securing proposals from architects for the open air pavilion. Renovations is a hundred dollars a square foot. New construction is two hundred dollars a square foot. Fire station just built is two hundred, one dollar a square foot, completed. Seventy-five hundred square feet, two hundred dollars, one point five million. That's it, short of that? So I don't see, I'm using the low all figure of a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, and we keep saying that we can build something for two or three hundred thousand dollars square foot. My addition don't come out that way. It doesn't. I mean, a four thousand square foot building is going to cost you six hundred thousand dollars minimum.
Concession stand and two bathrooms is going to be four, four hundred square foot.
No, you get it, wouldn't you? We've had a couple models that we're working with, Artec with, that are just doing the, the plans and specifications for the restrooms and concessions out of Camp Jordan. So we've got some prototypes now, and I need to get a posse for those, estimate a posse of what they would be. And that certainly could be incorporated in this. Because, you know, you're talking about something a little bit different because you're talking about building two restrooms with a concession that has to have the ability, that wall to be added on to, so you could have the field pass.
I'd love to see this thing you're into discussions with alumni association, with Mr. James.
Because they take the pass.
If it's nothing more than concessions and bathrooms and a little shell, they can come by later and add to it.
I understand. I'm just here to give you the information you need to make a decision on it. But that certainty of a decision is where the dollars come from.
Let's engage in some, we have more information about this.
I'm more than happy to sit down with Mr. James and we can hammer something out.
Yep. If, with the city's going to have to build, okay, we can talk about alumni, they're like, look, is there any way the city, they have some in-kind people that we'll do some work for. Is there any way that could be incorporated, do you think?
No.
With us?
No. It's a project, a state statute, and that's a city procedure on it. There's no, there's no relief on that.
Sorry, could you bid it out and I'll have the electrical put in? You have to do the plumbing because it's concrete.
You could, what you could end up doing is you could have a person on staff. We had a technical person, Kenny, stand up. You're now the, you're now the general contractor. He's going to oversee, he's going to oversee the electrical, he's going to oversee the building, he's going to oversee mechanical, he's going to oversee the HVAC, he's going to oversee the electrical. That's the only way that can be done. And then each one of these have to be separately bid out.
Check the bill.
Uh-huh. It's not feasible. That's why you put it over an irrelevant one contractor. See, the bottom line here, you get too many people involved in the project. And at the end, what happens when you turn the spigot on and nothing comes out? Or you turn the spigot off and water comes and it's not draining properly. Or the air conditioner, it's going to be one of, well, he did this, no, he did that, no, he did this. Whereas you lose the accountability for the project. I've been there, done that. You don't want to go that way. You really don't. If something doesn't work, you go to the general contractor and say, "You're the one that's carrying the performance bond on this one here. You're the one I can bring to the table. You're the one I hold accountable because it doesn't work." And you can go against this bond within that first year, just as we're doing right now. We're watching what's going on down at the fire station, right? And Mike is giving them a list of concerns all the time. If they don't get them done before December fifteenth, is that the magic date? Okay? Then we're going to go, we're going to let the bonding company know that we want these things taken care of now, and we're going to go after the bond. It's out of general contract. No general contractor wants his bond touched because that's, that's a concern in regard to him being bonded for other projects in the future.
Well, I'll take that as a suggestion. Well, I feel suggested if they did that, it's hard to get all those tents removed. I'll stick up there till we get one built. Have a picture of what's futureable. No, they come in, they're all right, they're all ready.
Sadly, I mean, the alumni association has kind of lost its steam, so to speak. That's why Tim is here. Hopefully, we can all sit down and try and figure this out.
Yep. I agree. I'm just throwing facts and figures out here right now.
It's just hard to raise money.
I know it is.
Alumni Association, you have one.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have a table or a lot of together...
We will, we will.
Can we have...
Do that like publicly do it?
I think it's a lot easier for me and Tim and Kenny to sit down and hammer some basics out first. I mean, I've been doing buildings, and Kenny's right in the middle, doing buildings and just together.
If that's fine, I just, I want to get some, really some true numbers out here.
Phil, how did the offer do this time?
We were talking earlier, I think somewhere between twenty, thirty thousand dollars, wrong, something like that. They're still luckily boused up to the end, lay donations to have the next meeting in September.
Uh, following up, you guys play Friday, Saturday night, what, Jim, where was that?
Tomorrow night.
Four or six thirty.
Got it. Word home next Friday.
Let's see about Friday, sir. Next Friday.
Sell some tickets.
Build, build happens each other's ticket. Apparently, we can't build it till come, so we're going, y'all want to come, then do it. Okay, so stay in line until come, then we'll still try and get working with it.
The first game's at seven. The first game's at seven, the rest of them are seven thirty. Seven thirty on the follow.
Please, you took it off, took it off the table, see, and make a motion to get that table worked.
Make motion to the table to have further discussion with Coach James and alumni association.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Pass to your side.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move bids, resolution forty-eight thirty-three.
A resolution that City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarded bids for purchase of various sizes, fire hose for the fire rescue department.
Motion approved, twenty-eight thirty-three for the fire hose on the low bid.
Same, same. Go, Phil, then.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Pass to your side.
Yes.
Low bid was EBDs. For fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay, resolution B, the mayor's not here to that. I think this is, is a point with... Playing conditions, so we'll, I guess, if this connects, maybe it'll have to be tabled. Just wait this next meeting. Okay, resolution number twenty-eight thirty-five.
A resolution that City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the emergency purchase of SWAT equipment for the police department.
Motion approved, the resolution twenty-eight thirty-five.
If I may, I'd like to add to this, to your motion, Councilman Cable, the funds come from the, dollars come from the fund balance, the city's fund balance.
Go, Phil, then.
Is this thing? Yeah, what's it, oh, sorry, I need one.
You want to schedule, schedule it, not do it, or do it?
Chief, go ahead, we're here, you're the chief.
As you know, we've reviewed, reviewed the old equipment. In the agenda memo, you noticed that we're looking at twelve tactical vests with all of the coverage point attachments. Twelve helmets. These helmets are lightweight, super lightweight, plus is what they have now. Those helmets that they have now are three to four pounds depending on size. We're going down to a pound and a quarter. The vest that we're looking at, if you'll notice, it says four and six eight pounds per the square foot. That is very new technology. That's how, that's how vests will weigh is by the square foot. So this, this technology is pretty, pretty active and light. So those, those members that have the new helmets, they'll have the new vest. That particular equipment is going to be almost half the weight that they're looking at right now. You look at the new firearms. These firearms, pretty, pretty late in design as far as what, what they're used for. Daniel Defense rifles. Those rifles are used by a lot of special operations groups, both military and in SWAT units. And we've not spared anything out of the wood. I made sure to go over that list multiple times, not only with the vendor of anything that might be left out. Some of the collars, throat covers, lower back, groin area. Even the belts that they will have will be armored belts. You see the armored belts and that tactical weapon carrier and the hardware. That is a level three A vest. And for some of you that don't know what three A is, there's only a couple of steps above that before you max out. These vests will also have the plate packs that go into those vests. And we move them from a three A to what they call a three, which moves into rifle rounds generally two point three. Some of you might recognize the word AK-47, seven point sixty by thirty-nine. That gives ballistic, ballistic coverage, I'll tell you that. There's only one step higher, that's a level four. And the only difference between the four and the three is the dish rated against thirty out of six armor piercing, which a lot of that was used in one or two, as you know. And thirty out of six is not seen a lot today. Not that it's not out there, but it's not seen. But that is, that's where it's at, is the level of your vest.
I've got a question. Notice the time will be twelve weeks in greater?
Yes, sir.
Something to our SWAT team will be down for twelve weeks in greater?
That's correct.
And I understand we have contracted the Chattanooga to come in?
Yes, sir. That's not correct.
Okay. The reason why I say this is, I thought we had a mutual agreement with College Dale and some of the surrounding cities that we need, need help, that they would come in and...
We do.
We would have the experience of...
We have, we have an MOU with College Dale, but in this particular case, since our SWAT team is deactivated now, for that reason, the sheriff's department will step in and assist us as needed. And they will take over as primary of that unit. It would be hard to impose upon College Dale to be the primary unit in another city. Now, as a backup unit or assistant unit, that's one thing, but to take over the call itself, I've already spoke with Sheriff Hammond. We already have an agreement in place. That...
Can they give you a dollar figure?
There is no charge.
Okay. And the fourth is good?
No charge on that. That falls under responsibilities of the sheriff. If, if we request any help, that falls under the responsibility.
Training.
Training. Oh, the training, as far as the SWAT team, that is not going to change. They're going to stay on, stay on their training regimen as they have been. That's a skill set that they develop, and that skill set, if not trained with, you can lose it. So the training will remain the same. I have also scheduled with, upon approval, tonight, an armor measure to be in here tomorrow afternoon to get this on the road. And he's actually the salesperson for the company. GT will be the vendor, but he is the, he's actually coming back from Metro Nashville for matching some of their people.
Can I ask you a question? Have, that would be plain, this SWAT team, how does, how do you get to call the SWAT team?
Well, it's a selection process that generally the SWAT team, they will hold, hold it, and they, they do training as far as physical agility and things of that nature. You become a probation member, I think it's about six months. But that's, that's the process to take it through this discussion.
They, or they've wanted actually, so they've got the SWAT...
They select those.
Or they're to, to you or...
The team selects those members.
Any other questions?
Uh, Barbara, on such a vest, Mr. Miller said, thanks, did we have some trouble, problem that we're needing past?
We have five officers that are in the twenty-eight tenth year of expiration. Those vests have all been ordered, waiting for them to come in. In twenty nineteen...
We're looking into our grants. And in two thousand fourteen, we had twelve thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars worth of grant money. Two thousand sixteen, we had nine thousand. Two thousand seventeen, we had seven, two fifty. And like, there were eighteen vests topped for that money from two fourteen. It was finalized back in two sixteen, according to this. And so since then, it looks like we've had the money to purchase forty, forty new vests since two thousand fourteen. Does that sound better, right?
That sounds close. I think on those vest, that particular vest grant is a fifty percent grant.
Right. So the thing I quoted is half of it, so...
Yeah.
So we put in fourteen, four, they put in fourteen, so...
Yes.
When you say fourteen to what?
Sir?
You had a paper that said fourteen to what?
The grant, five year, where the bid...
Okay, got you.
Yeah. Got you. That's where I have the number, okay.
Got you.
We're trying to move it at two different rates. You move with the people that you have. And as the new officers that are coming in, you order them. You're trying to meet in the mood to make sure everybody's going.
How about some like two thirteen, and those are the ones that's going out in two, in this year?
I could, sure, I would.
Five years of...
It's, it's a five year on a soft body one.
So two fourteen's, two sixteen's, two seventeen's, we're still good. Five years, two twenty?
When I came in in January, that was one of the priorities that the council had then. And I fulfilled that priority. I'm one of the, I'm one of the officers that then had a vest that was a chart.
Eleven, two seventeen, I hear since working on gathering prices. I use it back in December of two thousand seventeen.
Yes, sir. We've been notified of a vest increase over the last couple of months. And also the fact that Safari Land has probably bought up almost fifty percent of the company.
I just hope the sheriff is using our regular...
Yes, sir. And you'll notice tonight... And you'll notice tonight also, we have the Hoover grant under for twenty eighteen. We're looking at using that for grants for next year because we have sixteen vests that will come.
Nineteen.
I was going to say twenty nineteen. Will, will come do it as a part.
Here we have a bunch of this. But the only thing I want to comment is, like I did in my communication, is the concern that it got to this shape. And then from the preliminary reports from Mr. Riller, it looks like we're creating new procedures and policies and updating them so we don't have this recurrence. It will keep all the equipment up to date and.
That's correct.
Perfect.
If there are any more questions, will that roll out?
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Ask your story.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-eight thirty-six.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or designated purchase two sport utility vehicles for emergency warning equipment to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing, issued to Tennessee government, take twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion to approve.
Okay, twenty-seven thousand, we have the money for, we're going to have to get thirty-five out of the fund balance?
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up, for the fund balance again. Don't call.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Ask your story.
Yes.
A resolution twenty-eight thirty-seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving purchase of equipment using the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of eleven thousand eighty-six dollars for the East Ridge Police Department.
Is it? Is it eleven? Sorry, is it eleven thousand eighty-six dollars or eleven thousand eight thirty-three?
Eighty-six.
Zero eighty-six, sir, that's on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, the agenda reached all. So you eleven thousand, oh eighty-six.
It's correct.
Huh?
This is correct.
No, you're looking at F, aren't you?
I'm looking at an F on the agenda.
We have a, I put, we're on the.
That's a hundred one. It's eleven thousand oh eighty-six, correct?
Yes, sir, I mean.
Okay. On the agenda, it says eleven thousand, mine says eleven thousand eight thirty-three, culture's.
Do you want to eat a hell of a?
Really? I guess I need the glasses. Do that tape's coming. You have a question?
We need the, we got told here, fourteen four ninety-two. It says here that he's got additional budget already expensed, budget funds for the difference.
That's correct, sir.
Don't call.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Ask your story.
Yes.
A resolution twenty-eight thirty-eight.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for and acceptance of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars to purchase equipment and or pay for training for the East Ridge Police Department.
Motion approved, twenty-eight thirty-eight.
So.
Discuss.
Don't call.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Ask your story.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Your orders, Tim, send it to them.
An order to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number one zero seven eight entitled, an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, for fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen to June thirty, two thousand nineteen, appropriate the same to the payment of expenses of municipal government by designating a portion of the unassigned fund balance to the general fund and by changing the expenditure of the general fund.
Discuss.
Don't call.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Ask your story.
Yes.
Okay, over, final, uh, eight discussion of, uh, hurry, continue.
I need to, um, strike eight, John, just on this.
If you want to, uh, if you want thirty days, six day, ninety day, I'll catch you.
What's your name?
I'm going to get a little bit more, I guess. I'd like to go with thirty and just see what we.
Well, thirty is.
Yeah, we'll be more than thirty.
Thirty.
Actually, same by one, nine, so it's fifty-three.
Four five.
Please, can you have it scanned?
Don't worry, we're rushing you out here. You know, I think we just need to start the process.
I.
Obviously, we'll give it, like we discussed, and we might not even.
Man, let's go have a salary, right?
That's what we're discussing for something.
I'm going to have a salary, right?
I'm sure, Dave, we're going to be here. I, I think with what we've got going on, we should, I think we should put something up. I don't like to give anybody. You know. I had to pass around all of them.
Well, it's our, it's our company, not our company, you know.
That's right.
Pretty so.
One thing you can't put in. That's a suggestion, because I'm not part of this process, I will not be part of this process. That's your decision, guys. So you're up for it. I'd say probably eighty to eighty-five percent of the advertisements or city managers that come out today stay based out. Some will give a range, some will say starting, some will say current manager making to give a benchmark. So you have your choice.
I think.
You have an idea, so.
You put something. You know, you just, you, you've got to get people to want to apply, you know, they're not going to apply the whole time. I mean, I'm playing. It is good if somebody wants to throw out, just go ahead and throw out a range pick or something. Somewhere there would have an idea. You wouldn't apply, y'all, would you? You know, what's in the play? You're going to ask. Right, right, you're going, you're going, the first question, you know, that you would ask, you know, so. And if I don't like what I'm arranging, I won't apply.
Yeah, we're not totally going to win it, I read much of what you said, so.
Anybody that wanted to throw out a range?
I would not throw out a range. I would not throw out a range. If I were, if I were looking at it, I would put something, just the manager retiring for a salary was under ten. And that way, people know that the manager is out of the way. This is what he was making portion. And let them make that decision, as a suggestion.
Don't call. Will it struggle with a jar too? Without, uh, where, because I put them all out here, I guess.
International City Management Association and Tennessee Municipal League Newsletter. Those are the two that will generate, uh, strategic resource communications out of Dallas. I know those guys down there, they put one out. They'll pick up from my, the International City Management Association, and they'll go state, they'll go statewide on that.
We need to make a booking, uh, I'm going to look for, I should spread the life, we'll get some stuff. Good four-five back to that. See if anybody have anything else? They need a jar to buy it for that.